Okay, hi, everybody. We're going to call this meeting of the General Government Committee to Order. Joined by my colleagues, Councillors Letterman, Councillor Click Bruce, Councillor Tim Allen, Councillor Perez, and Councillor Justin Hurst. Thank you for all being here. You've got three items on our agenda. And the first item is a matter that was introduced to the council by Council President Letterman, pertaining to filling of vacancies and procedures for that municipal boards and commissions. So, Councillor Letterman, do you want to start us off with an introduction of that proposal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to all the members of the council and committee who are here today, as well as our guests, for calling the meeting. So this was an ordinance that we had passed first step on at our last regular meeting. Fairly straightforward ordinance. I was grateful that it received unanimous support in the first step, as well as several co-sponsorships. So thank you to individuals who are willing to also, in addition to supporting it, place their name on it as well. It's much appreciated. And so a fairly simple ordinance requires, once again, that the city clerk maintain on the website a public list of all boards, commissions, and committees that receive appointment. It would also require that that listing include a description of the commission committee or other bodies' responsibilities, as well as the expiration of the terms for individuals who are appointed there and any vacancies. It also requires that an application be developed by the city clerk to be able to collect the information of individuals who are interested in being appointed to a board, commission, or committee, and refer those individuals to the appointing authority in question. Most of the time, that is the mayor. Sometimes it is the city council president or the city council as a whole. And so again, I think this is an important ordinance for us to pass and put into place. I think we all know individuals who are qualified and interested in serving and have long highlighted some of the vacancies that exist. But I would also say, even if there were no vacancies, this is an ordinance that we should pass to put in place a better process and procedure. And the final thing I'll say, it's just coincidence, I saw that the mayor of Holyoke, Josh Garcia, just posted the other day on his Facebook page that there was a vacancy on a body in Holyoke and posted the link to what they call a public interest form, which I had a chance to take a look at and was fairly similar to what I envisioned we might put together as a city. But again, just goes to show certainly that this is a common sense reform and one that makes a lot of sense for us to do in the city of Springfield. So that's, you know, that's an overview of the ordinance for folks who may not have been familiar with it. And certainly, our tradition is always to hold a general government meeting in between votes to see if there's any proposed amendments or changes. And we'll also have another chance, if it comes to the floor in the future, for any additional changes that folks might be interested in. I'm happy to take questions or entertain amendments.
Councillor Letterman, before we do that, this past first step at our last regular meeting, is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So there are any comments or questions for President Letterman or proposed changes to the ordinance? Councillor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Councillor Letterman, for bringing this up. I'm just wondering if you could just highlight what's different from this, from what current practice?
That's a great question. So currently, we do list boards and commissions on the city website to a certain extent. I think there may be some that are not listed, but there is a listing of them.
Sorry, I just bartered you with that.
Oh, Councillor Fenton, I think you're unmuted, and you may not mean to be. So it doesn't list quite as much information, though, as the ordinance will require. So the ordinance requires also a listing of the description of the body, the qualifications for appointment, if there are any. In most cases, the qualifications are simply that you, you know, be a city resident, but some of them do carry other qualifications or nominating organizations. This also brings a change in terms of requiring by law that vacancies be posted within a manageable amount of time, so five business days from a vacancy occurring. It would require that the website be updated. And again, brings into codifying in law that the entire board and commission slate be reviewed every 30 days. So it just creates some guarantees in the future. Certainly, we have an incredible city clerk who's doing a great job, you know, in regards to what is currently required and what is possible. But again, in the future, someday, none of us will be here, right? And so we want to make sure that we're putting in place practices that will benefit the city, you know, for posterity. The other change is certainly the opportunity for individuals to place their name in consideration for a board or commission. Currently, there is no formal process by which to petition an appointing authority for consideration. And so in other words, you know, if you're an appointing authority, whether that be the mayor, the city council president, or our body as a whole, in some cases, you really have no choice but either to solicit publicly on a case-by-case basis, or, you know, theoretically, I suppose you could just appoint somebody that you know, who you think would do a good job. But I think that the spirit of this is that you shouldn't have to know somebody to get appointed to a board or commission in Springfield. You, as a resident, should be able to come forward and volunteer and be considered based on the qualification for the position. So I think that is probably the most important part of the ordinance, to be honest with you, is the opportunity to create a transparent process for individuals to place their name forward for consideration.
Okay, just thank you. And one follow-up to that is, do we know how many of these boards and commissions there are? And are there full descriptions of them and their purpose and their function or mission on the website already?
There's not a full description of their purpose, function, and mission on the website, but I think the clerk can speak to the effort that she has been undergoing independently relative to getting all of this information together and up to date so that we can have a clear listing. And that's the other thing this ordinance will do, is make sure that for future clerks, you know, they have the opportunity to know that that will already be in place because it'll be a requirement for the clerk. But I would certainly defer to Clerk Oyola Lopez, who can share with you what we have currently.
Thank you, Councillor. So currently, what we have is a list that's being updated, I want to say, on a daily basis. I have someone here in the clerk's office that's working on actually tracking what all of the boards and commissions. What happened when I first became clerk was we received a list from the mayor's office of the boards and commissions as they existed in a Word document. And we've transferred that into something more of a spreadsheet that we're able to track whether or not it's the appointing authority is the mayor's office, whether or not the appointing authority would be the council. And also kind of going back in time and capturing when these people were actually appointed, what the expiration date or term that the limit is for their appointment, and finding out some of these people have moved out of the state. Has someone else been appointed in their stead to this board? And kind of capturing all that information to then be able to update slowly, Minitrack, and then that feeds into the website. So you might see changes, you know, on a daily basis happening on the web. And hopefully, this will be helpful, what Councillor Letterman has proposed will be helpful so that we know who the appointing authority is. I think that there was some confusion in that, even with me getting calls from people who sit on boards, you know, weren't sure who appointed them initially. So that's where we are right now. The one thing that I would add to this is I think that we should possibly move in IT because the piece that we're looking at right now that I can easily update and add to, I think we might consider having a standalone piece to the city site just so that we can have the application and just different drop-down boxes and things that Minitrack can't provide, and it's not really built to do.
You're saying for the development of the application, Gladys?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councillor Letterman and Gladys, and I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Hurst?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councillor Letterman, just a quick, few questions. One, how do we ensure that these individuals who have applied to be a part of these boards and commissions gets to the individual who is appointing them? Whether it's the mayor or the city council, or do they just exist on a particular website that folks have to go in and check, or how's that going to look?
So the ordinance would call for the city clerk to forward applications to the appointing authority. And so the appointing authority should be aware that the applications exist and should be able to, you know, access them via the city clerk at any time. You know, it's ultimately incumbent upon the appointing authority to review them, right? And that is, you know, that is a decision that's at the discretion of the appointing authority. But as I said in our most recent meeting, you know, I think any appointing authority that's doing their job should be reviewing the names of the individuals who have submitted for consideration.
Will it be on the website as to who applied and when they applied? And at what point in time do their names get removed from the list, if ever?
So this ordinance does not call for it to be publicly identified that individuals applied. I don't, you know, I don't think we're required to necessarily disclose that. And then relative to whether their name gets removed from the list, I don't think there's really a capacity to do that. I suppose somebody could ask for their application or their consideration to be withdrawn at their discretion. You know, I think beyond that, if somebody was contacted, you know, maybe you were interested or an individual's an appointing authority was interested in their service, you know, certainly the individual has the right to decline if it no longer is, you know, possible, feasible, or if they are, of course, you know, no longer eligible.
I guess the only reason why I ask is because it would, you know, it would be nice if you had individuals that were on the list for a long time, just to, it'd be nice for us to know, because at least if the mayor chose not to, you know, appoint them to a particular body, maybe we could offer them another slide on a board that the city council is in charge of. So might be nice to know and maybe be in communication with those individuals. Certainly something that you can do outside of the ordinance. Last question is, is it going to be extremely clear to these individuals who apply that, especially if the appointing authority is the mayor, that it has nothing to do with the city council if they're not selected and if they're on this list for a long time and, you know, are not contacted to serve? Because what I would hate to see happen is that folks in turn think that we are responsible for them not being selected and remaining on the list forever, especially if we're not the ones appointing them.
Certainly. So the ordinance calls for the appointing authority for each board, commission, or committee to be clearly identified in the public listing. And then the ordinance further calls for the General Government Committee to review the proposed application that is developed, right? And so I think certainly as part of that review, we could make sure that the language there is included to make clear that, you know, number one, this is an application for consideration, right? And that, number two, the ultimate decision is made by the appointing authority in question.
Got it. As long as that's clear, I don't see any issues with it. And then I guess my final question is, have you been in contact with the mayor's office and got their thoughts on this particular ordinance and whether they'd be in favor of it?
No, I mean, the mayor will have an opportunity to speak on whether or not he's in favor of this ordinance when he either signs or vetoes it. And, you know, the veto process includes an opportunity for the mayor to issue a veto message, and then it comes back to us. So, you know, I don't think the legislative process, for me...
I just think it might be a nice...
Okay, yeah. I think it might be nice as well, but I also think...
My recommend, I think it might be nice to...
I'm sorry. I think we might be inadvertently interrupting each other. I think maybe you can't hear me or I can't hear you.
Go for it, go for it, Councillor.
So the answer to your question is, I have not been in direct contact with the administration about the ordinance, but my feeling is that the administration will have an opportunity to speak on the ordinance when they either, if the mayor either signs or vetoes it. You know, I think it's a fairly straightforward piece of legislation that we should pass, regardless of whether the mayor supports it or not. But I also don't have any indication from the mayor whether he supports it or not.
Yeah, I guess my only point is that it might be nice to see if, you know, if there are any concerns that he might have, that we could address them and if there are any suggestions in terms of making it better, that, you know, we could do that in advance. And, you know, obviously, I mean, we certainly, you know, if the mayor doesn't want to weigh in, then that's fine, too. But it just seems to me that because this is such a no-brainer and because it's something that ought to happen, that, you know, as opposed to, you know, as opposed to us just shoving it down the mayor's throat, it might, you know, make sense to at least ask if he had any issues or concerns or any edits that, you know, would make him more apt to actually, you know, not veto it if he was thinking about that. So anyhow, just a suggestion, but, you know, have at it. Do as you wish, my good man.
Your point is well taken. I mean, certainly, the mayor's administration is notified and invited to all subcommittee meetings of the city council. That's part of our standard notification process for posting these meetings. But certainly, in advance of our next meeting, I'm happy to have a conversation with the mayor or his chief of staff and get their thoughts. You know, I certainly can never purport to speak for them. And so, you know, I'll invite them if they would like to share comments with the council, either, you know, through our meeting, or if they would just like to submit something. But, you know, again, that's their prerogative.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Councillor Hurst. Any other councillors? All right. Councillor Letterman, just my two cents on the point. I think Councillor Hurst raised an issue about disclosing in some public manner the names of individuals and potentially their materials who've expressed interest. I don't know whether that's a good or bad idea, but I do think that we should at least have a communication with the Law Department about that. I'm not sure if a member of the public expressing interest in a position with the city is a public record. And I know that there are at least some folks who wouldn't want that information to be public. So we have to be at least somewhat cognizant of that. And if we're going to take a step in a direction towards, as Councillor Hurst suggested, publicizing these lists, I think we need to give consideration to their rights as well and their own privacy. So...
I agree. I will ask the Law Department, number one, if it is a public record. Because if it's considered a public record on its face, then we need to let people know that at the outset, right? If it is not considered a public record, we may need to give some thought to how, you know, what the process would be if individuals did want it to remain private. I agree. I think people may want to be considered, but, you know, be concerned about being put in the political spotlight, especially if they are not appointed, right? So that's a good question by yourself and Councillor Hurst. So I'll get an opinion on whether it's a public record or not. And then if it's not, we can kind of explore that aspect.
Thank you. Councillor Perez?
I was going to ask that question because I wonder what had been the process in... Before I researched yesterday the web for the board and commissions to see how many board and commissions are there, and Gladys, the clerk, thank you, because if you are developing that process, because it was very confusing seeing it. And I want to know if the people, the process of applying in the past, what has been the process of applying? And, you know, and thank you for having this meeting on this subject and making the addendum to it because a lot of people lately have been asking specifically one appointed veteran, and people were saying we were not aware of that that position was open. So I want to know what was the process in the interim before?
Yeah, to my recollection, at least during the five years that I've been on the city council, there has not been a process, which was sort of the motivation behind bringing this legislation forward. In the past, you know, informally, I think people have been asked to submit a letter, you know, stating their intent, just by sending a letter to the appointing authority. But, you know, there isn't any way to verify that, right? So I think that, you know, that's what this seeks to solve, is creating a, you know, a more open process. And, you know, it's something that's within our authority to do. So that was my motivation for bringing it forward. And then the council has twice passed resolutions. Councillor Perez urging, you know, more to be done around this process. And so, you know, sort of in the absence of more being done, you know, I felt that a legislative proposal was in order.
Thank you. Councillor Hurst?
I was just going to say, if we are going to end up publicizing the names, we probably should make that clear on the application process so that folks have the heads up, may dictate whether they apply or not. So point well taken.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions on Councillor Letterman's proposal? I don't have any other members in my committee present, but I would intend to report it out with a favorable recommendation in my capacity as chair. And thank you for investing the time and bringing this proposal forward, Councillor Letterman.
My pleasure. Thank you all for the feedback, and we'll definitely get, we'll definitely get an answer on that question, Councillor Hurst and Councillor Fenton, on the public record piece, because I actually, I do think that is important.
Thank you very much. Okay, so next item, let's get to your item next. Commissioner Calvi, the request for the revision to the ordinance that pertains to fees and who's responsible for fees related to the placement of dumpsters. Would you mind just giving us a brief overview as you did the other night?
Sure. About seven years ago, the Commodore from Massachusetts adopted NFPA-1 as an amendment to 527 CMR, which was the Fire Prevention Regulation Code. At that time, a group of ordinances was brought forward to the city council and passed. And one of those was the dumpster permitting statute. So I believe at that time, it was adopted that there's a fee for dumpsters, and dumpsters have to be permitted so we can inspect them and make sure that they're far enough away from buildings in the event of a dumpster fire, that it wouldn't cause a greater emergency and spread to one or more buildings. So as time has come forward, we're sending out a lot of bills to people who have dumpsters. And then we miss a lot because there's people who don't know there's a dumpster ordinance, and they have to get a dumpster permit. So we're looking to simplify the process and send and have all the haulers permit the dumpsters that they have in the city of Springfield. So that would go from like sending 30 bills a quarter to three bills a quarter. And then the haulers know if they have a... The haulers would know that they're required to get the dumpster permits. And then we would also increase the number of permits that were coming in and give us greater accountability for the dumpsters in the city.
Thank you. So in summary, the main change is that the haulers are responsible for the fee and getting the permit and not the resident?
Yes, sir. Nothing else is changing in it.
Are there any questions from the council about this proposal? Councillor Letterman?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make sure I understood it fully. So right now, if you get a dumpster delivered in the city of Springfield, you're cleaning out your garage, your attic, whatever, you are supposed to get a permit from the fire department?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how much does that permit cost?
Off the top of my head, I believe it's $25.
Okay. And what's the condition of the, what are the conditions of the permit?
You just have to let us know that you're getting a dumpster. We give you a permit and we'll drive by and make sure that it's in an appropriate spot.
Okay. So the idea being we don't want it too close to the structure or a fire hazard or something like that?
Exactly.
Okay. So right now, residents are supposed to do this before they get a dumpster delivered. So dumpster companies are just saying, well, you know, our job is just to deliver it, right? We're not responsible for that.
Exactly.
What's the penalty right now if you have an unpermitted dumpster?
Well, that's part of the problem. It's very difficult to track down.
Right. I mean, I would imagine that very few people are getting the permit.
We get quite a few, like, associated building wreckers and places like that that are doing larger jobs.
Commercial operation.
Commercial operations know they have to have them. A lot of homeowners don't realize they have to have them. And oftentimes, homeowners, once you tell them they need to have a dumpster permit, they'll come down and get one, and everything's taken care of.
What about a dumpster bag? Because I know these have become very popular. You can buy them at, you know, Home Depot or Lowe's, and it's like $200. And then it's like a huge bag, but then a truck comes and picks it up?
Yeah, those are even, would be even tougher to track.
But does it apply to those?
I don't believe it does.
Because it's not a...
It's not a commercial hauler's dumpster.
Okay. Okay. What do other cities do?
Several other cities have switched the burden from the resident to the hauler.
And they have seen updating compliance?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hurst?
Thank you, Commissioner. So I guess I'm a little confused here. So you're asking these folks to pay $50 per dumpster? This is an annual fee? Is that accurate?
It would be, it would be accurate. Most residents don't have a dumpster for more than a short period of time. And we've already asked them to pay it. They already are supposed to be paying it.
So I guess I'm getting a little confused in terms of like the dumpsters that you have out by your, like, multifamily units that the city does not pick up, and then the dumpsters that folks call to clean out their garage, right? So I guess how would these folks know how many dumpsters per year that they are going to have? Have to pay the required permit fee of $50 per dumpster, annual fee? How would they know? You wouldn't know if they paid, like I said, they paid 50 dumpsters, and that dumpster didn't include the one that I ordered. How would folks be able to track that? And how would they know how many dumpsters they're going to use?
Well, the haulers would know how many dumpsters they're putting out in the city. So that's why we were switching the onus from the residents to the haulers, because the haulers would be educated and know that they would have to get the permits. Other communities have already done this. And then they would know if they put another dumpster out, they would have to get a permit. And then it gives us greater redress to go after a dumpster company who truly knows what the rules are and would be openly violating them.
All right. So let me just read what it is that I'm looking at here, and then you can help me clarify. It says, "Supply the Springfield, the responsibility of the dumpster hauler to supply the Springfield Fire Department with an annual list of the current dumpsters in use throughout the city." At what point in time do they do that? Do they do that at January 1st? And then are they required, is that the only time in which they have to do it? Even though they know that there are multiple dumpsters, like throughout the year, that folks will request? I guess I'm a little confused here, Commissioner.
So what they would do is at the first of the year, so many places have static... So what they would do is at the first of the year, so many residents, many places have static dumpsters that are always there. So, we would start the year at that point. We have these amount of static dumpsters. We owe you permits on. Um, excuse me, on say thirty six static dumpsters that we have in the city and are continuously there.
Okay.
Then, as the year goes on, if they're going to place a dumpster, say, uh, counselor, you call up and say you need a dumpster at your residence. And upon them delivering a dumpster, they would have to make us aware that they have placed the dumpster at your residence and how long it was going to be there.
Okay, um, I, I guess I just wanna make sure that, that. That it's in this ordinance. Um, so I'm trying to go down and it says during the calendar year. On a quarterly basis, the dumpster haulers should submit a written report to the Springfield Department of All New Contracts. For dumpsters within the city and locations there are. Um. And that's again. Is a new contract, what, what is a new con, is a new contract when I call for my, I mean, I call for a dumpster. For um, for a few days, is that, is that what a new contract consists of? I mean, I, I guess that's, I'm just not. It's not clear. Is that a new contract? Like, I just don't know how you're going to monitor it, right? So if they come in at the first of the year, you have this amount of dumpsters. And then, let's say, I guess maybe you'll know from the permits that folks take out. You'll know from the permits.
Know from the permits and the problem what we're having now is like it was brought up at the meeting the other night. Uh, I believe it was Counselor Whitfield said she got a dumpster and didn't know if she was supposed to get a permit. So.
You breaking up, am I breaking up?
No, Commissioner Calvi, I think your phone will, you may be blocking the microphone a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now?
Much better, yeah, much better.
So, so this is just, uh, I believe, uh, the other night when we were at the meeting. Counselor Whitfield had said that she had gotten a dumpster and didn't realize that she had to get a permit. So what this is doing is taking the onus off the individual resident and putting the onus on the haulers to notify us where their dumpsters are in the city.
All right, um, I, I guess I'll let you figure out the language. The language doesn't seem as clear to me as, as, as it probably should. But um, you know, I defer to you guys in the law department. I guess the only issue that I have is if we're paying twenty-five dollars. We were paying twenty-five dollars for a permit that we were supposed to pull. I never knew and I've been doing this for a while. Um, but we're supposed to go into the um, building department, take out a permit and we pay twenty-five dollars. For the fee, right, for the dumpster fee. Is that accurate? Is that what it is now for somebody that's looking at a temporary dumpster?
Uh, we didn't change the fee structure, so if, if the, I just said twenty-five, but if it's the fee and the permit is fifty. I just used that as a, as a point of reference.
Got it. Um, okay, so it's not going up at all. Um, and, and so essentially what folks are gonna see is that this fifty dollars is. Going to be passed on to the consumer. I mean, that's, that's just typically what they're gonna do and they're gonna raise their rates and. Um, and I guess we're supposed to pay for it anyway, so, so I guess to your point, maybe it shouldn't matter. All right, I guess I'm, I'm all set for now. I mean, I would kinda look at the language to make sure it's realistic for folks. To do what it is that you want them to do. Uh, to me, based off of the language, it looks, it seems a bit cumbersome. And you're probably going to lose a lot of dumpsters, um, sort of in transit in terms of. Um, actual documentation. I, it, it seems, it seems a bit much, but. Uh, I'll defer to you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Council Allen.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. BJ, um, couple of questions on it. Um, so, it, there must be a limited number of dumpster companies, right? Uh, three to ten or.
There, there's three to four major ones and then there's some smaller players you'll see who have dumpsters.
Okay. So when, when I call up for a dumpster from any one of those places, they're gonna inform me that they need to take out a permit. And that the cost of that will be deferred, will be passed on to them. And then, is that right?
Well, I would assume if they're doing good business, they are.
Okay. Um, all right. So how do we know? How do we know that there's not more dumpsters being put out there that are getting permits?
Well, that's the problem we're having now with the citizens being responsible for pulling the permits. Uh, we're trying to put the onus on somebody who will actually tell us that if they have a dumpster out and. You're more than likely to find somebody at a commercial occupancy who was placed the dumpster without a permit than you are at a residence anyway. Uh, and oftentimes, uh, if you have a fire in that dumpster, that's the first thing we check is to see if you have a dumpster permit.
Okay.
So that's how we find the unpermitted ones now. If someone has a dumpster fire and we pull the permit, we go to check and see if they have a permit during the course of the fire investigation. We'll find out it's an unpermitted dumpster.
Gotcha. All right, so you, you, you might be lessening the chance of dumpsters being out there without knowing about them. Cause you're working through the businesses, but uh, you know, it just, that just seems, I don't know how, how to close that loop. But it just seems like a question I wanted to ask anyway. Um. So now that dumpster company has put out ten dumpsters in the month. And it's, you know, thirty bucks a dumpster or whatever for the permit, two, twenty-five. So they're gonna, we're gonna bill them and they'll give us two hundred fifty dollars. Is that the idea?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, all right, so enough on that line. Um, sounds like you've thought through that. Um, this is just an FYI of something that I was working on a few years ago and never completed. And so it's an ordinance that sits somewhere. I worked with Tashina on it when she was in the law department before she was city clerk, so that gives you some sense of, it was a few years ago. And I talked to Counselor, well, not Counselor Shay, Attorney Shay, our uh, city council lawyer now. To see if he could dig up whatever work had been done on it. And the point of the dump, it was related to dumpsters. And it was um. To limit the amount of time that a dumpster can sit on somebody's property. So if you go take out a permit for a construction job or clean out your attic, whatever, that you would have thirty days. I think the initial proposal was thirty days. Maybe it should be longer, but uh, I had, I think I talked to Chris Ignoli about it. We had done a little research on it, what was the standard? For the amount of time that is a reasonable amount of time for people to have it out there without any problem. And when is it getting over a ti, a reasonable time limit? So that it's a, you know, a kind of a blight on the neighborhood or something, or people have to keep looking at this dumpster. Uh, is there anything that the fire department does or DPW, as you know, that limits the amount of time? Um, a dumpster can be there, like when you, when you do the, when they get this permit, are they able to leave it out there as long as they want?
Well, it's a year, it's a year-to-year permit for that occupancy.
Okay.
If they moved in three or four dumpsters to the same spot here, that's what we are basing ours on.
Are you getting twenty-five per dumpster or twenty-five per property for the year?
Per permit. So that property's got a dumpster permit for the year, so it's, it's a fifty dollars per year per property. For the dumpster permit.
No matter how many dumpsters.
Right.
Okay. Do you just?
And Counselor, I'm sorry. Counselor, if you'd like me to uh, tell you what we do at DPW. We control what's in the right of way, so if a building wrecker or a homeowner wants to put a. Dumpster in the right of way, first of all, we usually don't let them. But when they have to, depending upon where they are, they have to obtain an occupancy permit from us. And it is seventy-five dollar flat fee plus thirty-five dollars a day. If it's in the right. When they get the permit, they give us, we're gonna be there for five days, eight days, ten days, and that's what we write the permit for. If they become in violation of then the permit, then they get fined five hundred dollars. However, that is just within the city right of way. That is not on private property, private parcels.
So, so any dumpster, any one dumpster could be paying seventy-five and if they leave it there, five days, another five times thirty-five.
Correct. And usually the only time we're dealing with onsite or uh, excuse me, right-of-way. Is in business districts and areas like that where there's no other place on the private property to put it. Most residents, most res, we will not allow a resident to put a dumpster in the, in the street when they can put it in their driveway, then it turns into BJ's uh, permit.
Okay, gotcha. So you guys work together on that?
Yes, yeah.
So I know we're not here to discuss that idea, but if I could just one more question, do you have any sense, Chris, that, I mean, this came from people in. Neighborhoods near me that had complained that dumpsters were there too long. Um, and do you have any, you get any complaints about that type of thing?
Uh, from a complaint from our standpoint on private property, we, I usually don't. Uh, we do get, uh, the second somebody puts one in the street, we get a phone call, whether it's permitted or unpermitted. So that usually if it's in the street is when we get that first phone call. I don't get a lot on private property.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, we don't need to talk about that anymore. Just while we're all here, I wanted to get a little info. Um, I'm all set, Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Council Hurst.
Just really quickly, um, how do we, how do, how do we know whether the. Fire department is actually checking to see whether these dumpsters are safe? Because I'd imagine now you're going to have a lot more dumpsters that you all are going to be responsible for. And a lot more permits pulled. And if I'm the consumer and the, I'm ultimately gonna be footing the bill. Because it's gonna be passed to me, I wanna ensure that you all as a fire department are making sure that you're checking. This dumpster to make sure that it's certain number of yards away from the house that it needs to be. So how can I assure that that's happening? Cause I'm assuming that's where my fifty dollars is going.
Yes, sir. Uh, and this is the thing, we're trying to get a handle on where these dumpsters are so we can inspect them. So, uh. There's a. At, the inspectors go out and they do a inspection report that they've inspected a dumpster.
So I, so I wanna, I, I, I'd like to know a little bit more in anticipation of our next meeting of exactly what that process is gonna look like. And how we can ensure that our dumpsters are going to be inspected, because I mean, for me, I know I'm gonna be footing that fifty dollar bill. And I wanna make sure that folks are actually inspecting to make sure that, that I'm safe. Uh, and I assume that a portion of that fifty dollars ought to be going to the fire department and you guys ought to have a system. It should be fairly easy now. I get for the contracts. I'd imagine that those are like yearly contracts. And you get to inspect those one time and I assume that the dumpster is going to stay where they're at. Any new contracts, you can go in, 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 you know, that are yearly contracts, you can expect once. And I'm sure that, that, you know, that's not gonna change. My concern is those individual. Short-term permits that are being pulled that we're ensuring that you all are now. Checking to make sure those are in a safe place and that's, that's gonna require some doing. You know, I don't know how many we get on a daily basis, but you know, if we get twenty. You know, you all need to be responsible for making sure that those twenty are inspected within a reasonable time. With, I mean, am I off on that, Commissioner?
Well, we, we do get by and inspect them when we know about them, sir.
So I, I guess I just wanna make sure that we're able to hold you guys accountable too, right? Because I, I mean, that's what I. I wanna make sure that there's some sort of mechanism or way in which you all are held accountable also. Because at the end of the day, I mean, uh, we now might be negligent as a city. If we're not doing our jobs. Now that we're footing, and now, now that we're making sure that everything is, you know, is legit. They actually filed the permit, fire happens, house catches fire, you all haven't done your inspections. I ask, that poses a problem. So I mean, we might, might just wanna think it through just a little bit more so that, so that we know what we're asking of us as well. What's a thought?
Uh, thank you. Counselor Perez has a question. Um, but before we get to that, Commissioner Calvi, just to Counselor Hurst's point. It, are you concerned about being unable to inspect every dumpster that applies for a permit?
No, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Perez?
Yeah, my concern is, um, Commissioner, now that we have so many development in the city with dumpsters for us. To, and I'm sitting here and I need to ask this question, because I'm in the virtue of um, having a dumpster in my property. Um, how soon do we get the per, the permits? Because now if it's gonna be. Um, transferred to the commercial as resident, where does that leave us? Um, and it's out of concern that is so many construction going on and so many dumpsters requested. How soon? Because right now, if that is to happen, I would like to see a process, how soon we're gonna get that permit? Because what's gonna happen and I foresee that happening is that I'm calling in for a dumpster that I might utilize for Friday. But because now they have to go and get a permit or acquire a permit. Um, how soon is to turn around uh, for that permit to be acquired?
It should be pretty much instantaneous if they call us up and tell us where the dumpster's going.
Could it be done via email? What's the process? Or you have to physically go get the, what's the process?
A, a phone call or a email would suffice.
Okay, so you're gonna establish an account. I'm looking at a particular company. Now I have, um, you transfer. That permit to that company. The company is gonna charge me, but they have to call it in. And then they have to let me know when's the permit approved and that's what the concern I have. Um, and I don't wanna see the city trash because the resident has to be waiting for that dumpster. That's, that's, that's the process of the community can know. Um, and that's the issue, that's the concern I have right now.
So if a hauler calls up and says they're gonna put a dumpster at fifteen Dwight Street. We would give them the okay to put a dumpster at fifty in Dwight Street and tell them, when are you gonna deliver it? And we'll go inspect it.
And what about the transition, the monetary transition? You're gonna have an open account with this company? Or they have to send the money first in order to give out the permit?
Well, we would bill them for the permit, uh, you know, keep track of the, keep track of running list of the permits and then send them a bill for them.
Thank you. I still have concern, but thank you.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Perez. Uh, Counselor Hurst again?
I, I know we have, I know we have one more uh, item. And so I guess, you know, I'd like to have another meeting on this. And I'd also like to include the building department, because oftentimes what happens is that. Uh, you all might be able to do your job, but the building department oftentimes lags in terms of them actually inputting. That information into uh, the actual system. And so the idea that you all are going to be called right away. I just don't think that's realistic, especially considering the fact that the building department is understaffed. And even now, it takes them a long time that to just input permits into the system. And so I just. I, I don't think that's realistic. I'd like to hear from um, from the thieves of the world and then I'd also like to hear from the actual business owners. I mean, I, you know, the fact that we haven't, we don't have any of them at the table, to me, seems like we're missing a voice that we ought to have present. Thank you, Mr. Jay.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Um, we do have one more item. I'd just like to say, I'm the only member of the committee here today. Uh, it's my intention to report this out on Monday and recommend a positive approval. I think that um. Commissioner Calvi, at least to my satisfaction, I only speak for myself, has uh, demonstrated the reason for changing the burden. From the resident to the. demonstrated the reason for changing the burden from the resident to the, uh, to the hauler or the dumpster owner. I think certainly there's a lot of other issues that have been raised here that, uh, should be given appropriate consideration. We're aware of at least three different types of situations. Permanent dumpsters, temporary dumpsters, and dumpsters in the right of way. All three of them are treated differently. And, uh, also sounds to me like Counselor Allen has some really good suggestions for putting caps on how long individuals could keep those dumpsters um, on private property on a temporary basis. I think a thirty-day limit is very appropriate. I've heard from constituents over many years about complaints about dumpsters remaining on properties for many months, quarter of a year, sometimes more. So, um, you know, my intent is to report it out. I think that, uh, personally, I'm ready to vote on it and approve the shift of the burden and the fee. And, uh, I would, uh, encourage a discussion, a future discussion on uh, this issue about the different permits, how they're treated, and what the overall workflow is within the city for handling those various permits. So that'll conclude that matter. Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Commissioner Calvi.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And, uh, the last item, uh, is my item. This is a speed hump proposal. Uh, it was, uh, brought forward to the council at our last regular meeting. And, uh, I was receptive to a referral to this committee so we can discuss it further. Uh, there's a lot of moving pieces to it. And, uh, it is a, it is a change of direction. Um, and creating a process for allowing the city to consider, uh, speed bumps. It's a reflection of a couple of years of, of input and discussions between, uh, DPW, public safety, other stakeholders and other cities and towns. And, um, I think that it's important that we flush as many of these issues out as we can. I will, for everybody's benefit, just give a, uh, thirty thousand, excuse me, foot review of some of the more important aspects of the ordinance. And then would, um, open it up to comment or question. Uh, the proposal is to require that at least two-thirds of, uh, property owners, according to assessors or registered voters, according to the election commission, uh, of residents within an impacted segment, that's two-thirds, would have an opportunity to petition the city for, uh, the installation of a speed hump. The impacted segment is defined in the same way that forty-eight defines illegal abutters, so three hundred feet uh, in a radius from the location of the proposed speed hump. You'd need two-thirds of the voters or, uh, property owners within that area to sign the petition to get it started. Uh, in its discretion, DPW can increase the area that is, uh, included in the impacted segment to be more than three hundred feet if they deem it necessary, uh, for purposes of public safety and traffic. It also requires the signatures, uh, that are part of the petition to be, uh, from at least two parallel streets uh, to the proposal. This, the purpose of this requirement is to ensure that we're not just moving, uh, speed, uh, speeding on one street to the street over. Um, and the petition needs to include at least one-fourth of the total signatures to come from those parallel streets. There's a ninety-day trial period. Residents have a chance to object during that ninety-day trial period. Uh, you know, my expectation is that once the temporary, uh, speed control device is put in, that, uh, there'd be an opportunity for residents who are concerned about it to speak up. If a fourth or more of the property owners or registered voters do so, then, uh, that's the end of the proposal. Uh, there's a requirement for a neighborhood council letter of support. Uh, if those steps are complied with, uh, it'll be referred to, uh, fire, police, and DPW for review. If those, a- after those reviews take place, uh, it would go to the Board of Public Works for a hearing and then to the city council for final, uh, disposition. Uh, at each step of the process, the requirements are that we consider drainage, public safety, and road maintenance. Uh, two other relevant considerations are that no speed humps can be placed within ten feet of any driveway, whether that's commercial or residential. And, uh, placing of a speed hump would necessitate no parking within eighteen feet of either side of the speed hump. Um, decisions for placements of speed humps all need to be made consistent with the manual and uniform traffic control devices for state and highways, uh, which is a, a document that's maintained by the United States Department of Transportation. And at this time, the ordinance would only allow for petitions, uh, to be brought forward on streets that are designated as local roads by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and which have a speed limit, uh, of twenty-five miles an hour or less. So that's the proposal. And, um, we've got Director Signoli here. And, uh, are there any questions or comments from the council or Chris, if you have any?
No, Michael, the, the only other item that I wanted to add in, it was in my last revision that when the application is submitted, we are looking for an exact location of where the speed hump is being, uh, put in. What we're trying to avoid is somebody making an application saying, we wanna speed hump somewhere on Smith Street. Uh, because depending upon where you are in the street, the impacted area could be completely different as we're talking about three hundred feet. So we are looking for a specific location of where the speed hump is being selected. And then depending upon the location, we, the DPW, then, uh, will make a determination as to what type of structure gets put in. And what I mean by that is our preference is not to do a speed bump. We are talking about something that's gonna be a little, uh, longer, a little wider than just a bump in the roadway. So, but that's gonna be really depend upon the specific location, uh, geometry, grade, drainage, um, a budding areas, that, that whole thing as well. The other issue is related to, we are not going to the curbs with these. So therefore, there are going to be issues in certain areas, especially during snow season, where there is snow on the edge of the road that, uh, uh, you know, could, could be an issue with, uh, some residents. So, you know, we have some items in there that talk about the resident having to, you know, making sure that snow can be, you know, snow or wet, melting snow can travel down the gutter uh, as well. So, uh, a couple, a couple extra things like that that we added in, uh, into the, into the, uh, uh, final ordinance.
That's great. Thank you very much. And we'll, we'll put in, I'll, I'll draft some language to revise to say the exact location needs to be specified, not just the street. Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick question. Certainly, I'm a supporter of the ordinance and a, and a co-sponsor. So one question, though, relative to the decision by the city at some point to want to install, you know, a raised, um, speed table in an area that is less residential. For example, you know, there's a proposal in front of the library as a part of the reconstruction there to do a raised speed table. There's a planned raised speed table at, um, Wilberham Road. This doesn't preclude us from doing that, right? We don't have to petition the more commercial entities along those drags to continue those processes, right? We can still just do that through the Board of Public Works.
Correct. And, you know, when we are talking about like the one we're doing on Wilberham Road, we're doing on State Street, and there's gonna be a number of others. Once you get out of the local road system, there are a, a level of engineering requirements that have to be done. You have to get into speed, traffic volumes, uh, truck traffic, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So therefore, when we start to look at those areas, uh, there's a lot more engineering involved rather than just kind of our best engineering judgment in the neighborhood. Uh, so that kind of brings it to a complete different level.
So, uh, what about, um, on, you know, other thoroughfares, but in specific sections? Uh, what process do, do we have outside of the residential petitioning process to be able to get a speed table considered?
As part of this application, none. However, what we usually get now is, yeah, for example, one of the ones that we're looking at is over on Plainfield Street. Um, you know, we get contacted by somebody and depending upon the level of contact and what we're trying to accomplish, and then figuring out the level of engineering that's involved, depending upon who's asking for it, uh, we may ask that entity to do all the engineering background. For example, it's not raised, but there's a HOCS system that is on State Street that was put in as part of the, uh, Indian motorcycle building complex there that they had to do all of the engineering background to that. So depending upon what's being asked and what context, it may be a burden of the city or it may be a burden of the person who's asking to do it.
So this process establishes the opportunity for residential petitioning, but it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate the opportunity.
Oh, no, not at all. Not at all. Yeah, no. Does it? Not at all.
That's great.
But we're not doing, like, for example, I was contacted by a resident who said, hey, I heard about this. I want you to put one on Berkshire Avenue. It's like, you know, that's not what this is for. And, you know, it's like, but we're, we're, it wasn't in association with a crosswalk or anything like that. It was just, hey, we gotta throw something there to slow people down.
Right. So there's, I mean, I think, yeah, I think the answer there is there's, there needs to be a larger conversation about the roadway design.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. And the other, the other item that Counselor Fenton mentioned in there that, that I was really pushing for was, you know, getting, getting the abutter, the abutting streets involved as well because, you know, we get applications all the time for like one-way streets. And it's like, hey, that doesn't impact me until it turns one way. Now everybody can get out of the neighborhood. It has to use my street. So that's why we wanna make sure that the abutters are involved. Because if you have parallel streets and you put it on one street, the people who cut through, you know, and I always envision roads like Jasper Street that cuts between Berkshire and uh, um, Bay Street, you know, there's three or four parallel streets. So if you put it on one street, somebody's just gonna take the other. And, you know, we don't wanna kind of be dealing with that cascading issue.
Sure. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Any other counselors? Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Mr. President or Mr. Chair. Um, Chris, th- this proposal, this ordinance had, is proposed for speed humps or speed bumps or whatever. Could you just lay out? Counselor Letterman just asked you, would such and such fall under this ordinance? Could you just lay out what the three or four options are for this kind of stuff? Speed bomb, speed hump, speed table, raised crosswalk?
Yeah, what, what, what my initial envisioning is of this is that the installation will not be a simple speed bump. Meaning it's, you know, something you drive through in Forest Park or something like that. I want something that's a little wider for a number of reasons. It does make the roadway maintenance a lot easier. And it ends up making the snow plowing and, uh, especially the drainage there a lot better. So we are, and depending upon where we are, the street, the grade of the street, uh, the cross slope of the street, we may have something that's four feet wide. We may have something that's five feet wide or even three feet wide. But that's gonna kind of be based upon that location, uh, and the, and the, uh, traffic and driveways and that sort of thing as well.
And so, so what are the ones that you, that, like, what's in front of Springfield College in front of the learning commons there?
Yeah, in front of there, that's something that's probably about six feet, six to eight feet wide. Uh, that, that's a raised crosswalk and, uh, wasn't built correctly, but it was a raised crosswalk. And, you know, that's something that's wider, uh, you know, than probably we would do here. And that's wider simply because you do need the minimum six feet for the crosswalk, uh, across the street. So that gets a little wider simply because what it's trying to accomplish. This is not in coordination with a crosswalk. It is simply something for slowing traffic. So I don't need, the width isn't as important as if we were having a crosswalk.
Okay. Got you. So that was two things there. Yeah. I mean, that obviously has steady traffic all day long.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah. So, okay. I'm all set for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Um, unless there's any other counselors who wish to raise their hand, I would just say in summary that, you know, the intent is to help mitigate the substantial problem of speeding in the city. Uh, but also to create an ordinance that doesn't, uh, lead to the proliferation of speed humps, uh, all across the city at the same time. So, uh, the process to get a speed hump up for consideration is, uh, it's a high bar. And, uh, we've designed it and I've proposed it that way intentionally so because uh, there are impacts to, uh, residents and neighbors, uh, as a result of having speed humps that uh, could, if not vetted thoroughly and properly, have unintended consequences. So we do have high signature thresholds here. Uh, testing periods, neighborhood involvement. And, uh, I think that on the sum, it's a, it's a very good ordinance. And I wanna thank Chris and his team for their help on it over the last few years and look forward to presenting it at the next meeting. All right.
Beautiful. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. So unless anybody has any other business to bring before the committee?
Oh, uh, Counselor, just a quick question. Um, Zaida also placed this on a, a maintenance and development agenda.
Oh.
For like, for like October nineteenth.
Uh, I may have made a mistake by putting it on this one. I will have to consult with her and see if she would like to do that or review the tape from this one and proceed with Monday night. I thought it was in my committee, but I, I suppose I could be mistaken. So I will, thank you for pointing that out. I will talk with her before. Yeah, that's a good, I could see it very easily falling under her committee. All right. So I will, uh, I will talk to her before Monday night and get the answer to that. Um, thank you for that information. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for all your help today. I made a lot of good progress and, uh, enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.